Okay, we're ready, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, August 9th, Town Council Meeting for the Town of Kensington. And first item up on the agenda is a moment of silence. I do want to make people aware of that longtime resident Dick Ward, who lives on Wheatley Street, passed away. So we want to lift up his wife Colleen and his two sons, Richard and Ryan. Dick was a really nice guy. His kids were in Troop 439. And he participated in a lot of Eagle Scout projects and that I was assisting on as well. So I just want to remember Dick's family. Is there anybody else before we have our moment of silence? Don't see anybody. Okay, if we could just bow our heads for a moment.
Julie O'Malley is home and doing much better.
Oh, thank you, Jack. Yes, I knew she was home. But yes, that's good to announce that. Thank you. All right, if we just bow our heads for a minute. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Did they? This is terrible. I did the minutes go out? I don't remember seeing them. From July 12?
I don't think we received a copy.
Matt?
I believe they were sent out.
I sent them out on Friday.
I did not receive a copy. Eddie, did you?
I don't think. I think they would have just gone to the council. I didn't get it. Did anybody else get the minutes?
I don't see a copy.
Yeah.
I can resend them out. I have a new outlook and maybe it picked up the wrong address or something.
Okay, well, that's fine. We will put this off because I can't approve minutes that we haven't seen.
Okay. I was wondering why I didn't get any response back.
Normally, we're right on top of that. So, um, all right. So we would not have had. So we do want to acknowledge this was the Town Council minutes as well as the Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes. So we didn't get either of those. And we do want to acknowledge that we briefly closed the meeting on the 19th after the work session to have a brief discussion about a legal matter. So we will postpone approving those minutes until the September meeting. Okay? And they will not be posted on our website until they're approved. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on down to. I've already acknowledged the closed session as number one. And we'd also like to, number two, acknowledge the council committee assignments and liaisons. That would have been in the meeting minutes. But I can briefly go through that. It'll be approved then at the September meeting. But the Audit Committee, Council Member Bridget Hill-Ziet and Connor Crimmens will be the auditing committee liaison. Board of Elections would be Darren Bartram. And he will be. He's not up for reelection, so he replaced Nate Engel for next year. Ethics Committee will be Nate Engel. Greenscape Committee, John Gerson will be chairing. And I will be the co-chair. And then the Development Review Board, no change in that. Connor Crimmens will chair and Darren Bartram will co-chair. And then the Traffic Committee, Nate Engel will chair and Bridget Hill-Ziet will co-chair. And then we are going to. I don't know if Nate wants to talk about this tonight, but otherwise we'll do it in September. We are going to combine the Traffic Committee and the Pedestrian and Bicycling Assessment Safety Working Group. And we'll come up with a new name. So we'll talk about that at the September meeting. Nate, are you gonna do an article in the Journal for the working group? I can't hear you. What? Uh-oh. Am I the only one that can't hear Nate?
I can't hear him.
I see the head going this way, so I'm gonna say yes. He's gonna. That's good.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Yeah, we're gonna write an article for the Journal for August.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so that is the. Those are the standing committees. The one. It's not a committee, but we typically have an MCPS liaison point person. Connor, I believe you had been that person. Did you want to continue in that role?
Yeah, happy to do so.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay. So Matt, make a note of that as well. Does anybody have any questions about the assignments?
No, Mayor, I'm also happy to continue working with you and carry on with the business community as well.
Okay, great. Okay, super. All right. Okay, well, let's go down to number three. And which is the limited duration signs. So Matt?
Sure, Council, we received some feedback from some of our commercial properties with regards to our limited duration sign regulations that we passed in February of 2020. I know there's a number of property managers and property owners here with us this evening with respect to 6-104F. So I'll pass it back to Mayor Furman. And I know she. We want to get some feedback from, like, Mr. Blick. And a number of others are with us as well.
Okay. I think the main issue with the changes that we made to the limited duration signs is that we had wanted to make, having gotten a little information from, I guess specifically, Mr. Blick, that the for lease signs are very important to the properties. And so pretty much, they're not really limited duration signs. They're more of an unlimited. So it was our intent to just make them permanent with some restrictions on size to avoid the billboards that tend to be installed on some of the properties, which seem to last for years. So I'm concerned about the size. I believe right now they can be 10 square feet and the location. So we want to be good partners with our business community. And that's why we're, you know, willing to talk about this this evening. So, John, did you want to start or?
Sure, sure, I can. So the typical sign that I've seen in my career is typically they're made of plywood. And so it's either a sheet of plywood, which is four feet by eight feet, or a half sheet of plywood, four by four. Four by four is the size of the signs that I have. I don't know what everybody else has, but that's what I've been using on my property. So at the minimum, you know, four by four, that'd be 16 square feet. Three by three, my concern with that is, you know, I mean, obviously, they could cut the plywood down. And, you know, we could live with that. But the problem is it's small. And when you're driving down the road, you know, what we're trying to do is to capture drive-by traffic or, you know, someone who maybe doesn't have a whole lot of time to look. And if the sign is too small, there's no way without them getting into an accident, you know, to get the name down, to get the phone number down. So it's got to be of a size where it can be readable and read relatively quickly and seen relatively well. That's why typically, when you look at these signs, you'll see the phone number typically is going to be the biggest so that if somebody's driving by, they can get that phone number and jot it down quickly. On the property that I have, you know, being specific to that, the property that I have on Farragut, because of the angle of the building, the building faces Farragut. It doesn't face Connecticut, but there's no, or whatever it is, University. There's really no traffic on Farragut that we'd want to try to capture. So we're trying to capture the traffic that's on University. In order to do that, if I had a sign that was facing straight out, unless as you were driving down the road, you happened to look to the left, you'd never see the sign. So that's a V-shaped sign. V-shaped sign now has two faces. Those two faces now were double that. So it'd be four by four times two, that's 32 square feet. So in the, in my world, and I know I'm not the only person that has a V-shaped sign. I know, I understand what you're trying to do, but for us to be able to do what we need to do, I really think that we need to have, you know, if it's a single-face sign, 16 square feet. And if it's a dual-face sign, 32 square feet. And I know that's probably not going to be very attractive coming from 10 square feet. But, you know, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe you have a, an approval process that you have to give approval for somebody and a reason why they might need a V-shaped sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Council, you have any questions for Mr. Blick?
I would. If there's anybody else here to speak, I would like to listen to them before we start finding questions.
All right, Matt, who else do we have here tonight?
We have Eddie Biamin, owner of 3930 Knowles.
Okay, great. Eddie, did you want to say anything or?
Well, I just wanted to add to John's comments, you know, on the timeframe. If you're limited, you know, you have properties that would lease within, within three to six months. And some, some properties that we own could be vacant for years. So we, that means we cannot post the signage for the duration of the vacancy. It's, it poses a big problem for us property owners if we cannot advertise our vacancies. That's how we pay our taxes, then how we support the community. Take away that.
The objective would be to try to get a sign that isn't restricted to that 60-day period of time, which I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that what the 10 square feet and everything? That if it's within those limitations, it doesn't, it's not limited to 60 days?
Well, that's what we were trying to do was, you know, having spoken to you at a previous meeting before we made the decision is that for lease signs are important to your business, that you don't want it up just for, you know, necessarily for 60 days. And I believe you said, you know, I always have a vacancy somewhere. And so our purpose was to make it a permanent sign. But then the permanent sign would come with, you know, size restrictions and.
Distance.
So, you know, we can't dictate what it says. And I'll be honest, John, I think you do a very nice job in designing your signs. They're very, you know, they're not, they're attractive. You're not.
Thank you.
So that's our goal, was to allow property owners to have a sign that was in a reasonably, reasonable size because what we were getting are these gigantic billboards.
Right.
So a full sheet of plywood or two sheets of plywood.
An additional issue that we were having. Sorry, John, but an additional issue that we were having on 3930 Knowles was not just the size of the sign, but was the placement. They were requiring that we were no more than five feet from the building. But our most, I guess, strategic placement exceeds that. And Matt, I think you've been communicating on our end with Claudia Yates directly. And we filled out the new paperwork. We've done everything on our end that we think is sufficient. However, we're looking for a little bit of leniency as that, that five-foot rule. Is that correct, Eddie?
That's right.
Can I just? I'm sorry, I understand Eddie is with 3930. Ms. Murray, what is your role tonight?
Sorry, I'm Director of Property Management. I am the asset manager for Eddie's property.
Okay, thank you.
Could I jump in on that also, please?
Sure.
Okay, so the distance also, that, that, for me personally and obviously for Eddie and for, I would think for many people, that five-foot limitation is also very restrictive, you know. And I actually think I could accommodate that. But we have two buildings. So at Concord, I think we could accommodate that. I found a spot that it would work. For the other building, for Farragut, there's just no way for me to ever to do it. You know, if you take a look at the, and I'd be happy to show someone from the, from the town if you wanted, but if you take a look at the layout, we have parking lot in front of the building. The area where the sign is currently located really is the only location that I'm aware of and for me to put a sign that is worthy of having a sign. You know, if I put a sign that's in the back of the building, you know, why bother? It's not worth it. So for me to have a sign that's going to get some visibility, it really needs to be on University. And for me to be able to do that, it's where it's currently located. The front face of that sign is 13 and a half feet away from the front face of the building. So that brings another question to it, to you, which is when you get this measurement of five feet or whatever it is that you decide on, is that five feet to any part of the sign? Is it to the furthest distance of the sign? You know, I think you need to define that as well. But in some cases, my building, Burka's Shopping Center, if you take a look at where Sherry Thur sign is, I don't know if they're planning on moving that. But, you know, that, that, maybe they have another location that would work, but it certainly is nowhere near five feet to the front of the building right now.
No, it's not. And it's, I mean, that is probably the billboard sign that we are dealing with right now. That is, that is definitely what we are trying to avoid. For sure.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if, in that scenario, is a, what do you call it? A banner on the building, a better option to you? Or is that a worse option or not an option?
Those would be, those fall under limited duration signs. And they're only allowed three a year, is that correct? Or was it four every 60 days? Do you have to change?
So it's four and they are permitted for 60 days each. And they can't be similar.
So I don't think that would work for you. I mean, I, I think we were open-minded to, you know, if you needed a variance regarding where you could place the sign, I think we would be willing to work with everybody. Because I understand, like, your building, John, that I would still call it this lesson your building, sorry. But it's, it, there really is no front yard.
Right, right, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
I wish there was because I'd like to get a permanent sign, you know, that had tenant names on it, but I have no place to put it.
Right, you have no place to put it. So I think that would be a hardship for that particular building that we would take under consideration, for sure. And, and so.
So I would ask that you, you consider, and I don't know what the answer is. I'm not, I don't have the answer. But five feet, you know, five feet, depending on the circumstance, if you're an office building or a retail building, that is so close to the front window that the people that are in the window, you know, in the office or in the retail spot that is in front of that are going to complain because either their visibility is blocked for their business in a retail setting or just what they can see out the window is going to be blocked. So that, you know, tenants are gonna, we're gonna have problems with tenants if we had it that close. And in some cases, again, like Farragut, it's just not possible.
That is exactly the case for us. And if you can, if you can allow me to share my screen, I can show you that we need to exceed the five-feet limit. I don't know if anybody has access to allow sharing screens.
Matt can do that for you.
Okay, you should have access now.
Perfect. All right, I'm sharing screen two. Can you guys see this? So, and Eddie, you can chime in if you, if you have any additional notes. Our sign placement, the best place is obviously here in this grassy mound. And if we were to only put it within the five-feet perimeter, that would bring us right here, literally adjacent to the building. And that's not effective for the travelers actually driving on Knowles or coming from Georgia Avenue. So for us, it's best to have it in that mound. Is that correct, Eddie?
Have you, have you considered a monument sign?
Eddie, you're on mute. That is one of our future projects, but temporary. Until we get it 100% leased up, we didn't want to put in that expense. But Eddie, you were on mute. Did you have something to add?
I think the previous sign that you had up was more into the left in the picture in the garden, and it was a V shape. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, we're planning on putting a monument sign, as Ayesha just mentioned. We are just trying to lease the rest of the building so we can go ahead and get all the tenants in there.
And Tracy, at one point, we did have a V-shaped sign. I believe it was actually, can you see my mouse moving? It was really located around here. And maybe it was a little bit too close to the sidewalk. However, when we initially spoke to Matt about it, our goal was to move it, you know, somewhat centered so that we can get traffic on both Knowles as well as anybody coming from Main Georgia Avenue.
Okay, I think it was further over because I live right next door to your building on Dietrich. So I'm in that area a lot.
Okay. So you know.
I thought it was, I thought it was at the entrance coming in from Knowles.
It's, it's, it's more like here. It used to be more like here.
Yeah, it was more closer to the, to the, yeah.
Yeah.
It was that further down. Yeah, so I agree with John. So thank you, John. I have a picture somewhere of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is, is the five feet is a challenge for many of us, if not most of us. And I don't know how you define the distance. You know, I'm thinking, I don't know the name of the building, but as an example, the building that is down where the train station is, you know, there's that, that three-story building that's sort of buried back there a bit. You guys know what I'm talking about? It's a three-story office building.
Are we talking about where the Driving School is next to the post office?
No, no, if you went past that. Is that where it is?
There's the dentist is behind them.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm thinking, coming from my building, if you were to, what is the road? If you, it's not Concord, but if you cross over Plyards Mill, what's that road there?
I think the one on Wheatley and Metropolitan, John.
Are you talking about the Riddle Building?
No, if you went down Metropolitan, down past, and the, the train station was on the right-hand side. This building is on the left-hand side, and it's buried back there. But it's a three-story.
Oh, right. No, it's in Parkway.
Right, so that building as an example, how would that building? I mean, that, to have a sign that anyone could see, it's got to be, what, 200 feet away from the front of the building? You know, so my, all I'm saying to you is, I don't know if having this limitation in a practical standpoint really works. And maybe there ought to be a review process where someone puts an application in and you guys, you know, have to, have to approve what someone's doing. And I personally would be okay with that. I'm not going to put anything up that's ugly or obnoxious or whatever. So, you know, if we could all work together, I think we'd be able to make something happen here.
And I'm glad you're saying that because that building on Kensington Parkway, the sign they did have up, excuse me, what, I think they'd had that same sign up for probably 20 years. I mean, so that is not a limited duration sign. That's an unlimited duration.
So, but you could write some things in here that you give approval for a year or two, you know, whatever it might be. And you can re-review it. And your, your approval could then be that they have to put a new nicer-looking building, a nicer-looking sign. If I, I don't want to get off that idea, but before I forget also, the 60-day having to change the sign program, I don't know about everybody else, but I would really struggle with that because as an example, the, I mean, the signs that I have, the four-by-fours that I use, and I know we're not talking about those, but those signs installed are about $850 each the last time that I bought them. So a double sign is not quite double that cost, but, you know, it's, it's over $1,000. A banner that goes onto a building, those banners installed are typically about $900 or $1,000. It would be financially very difficult to every six, you know, every two months to change that out with another banner. And maybe you're not overly concerned with that. I'm not using that kind of sign, so I'm not overly concerned about it. But for those people that do, that's a, that's a problem that's going to be expressed to you in the future is the, unless you're putting up some kind of really cheap piece of garbage, which is not what you want up anyway. You know, it's going to be tough financially to be replacing them every two months.
Well, I think what we, our intent there was to provide an opportunity for, say, a Schroes Snyder's to advertise spring products and to advertise, you know, fall products and winter products. And so they're, they are truly a limited-duration banner. You know, we're understanding that a for lease sign, you basically want it up permanently. That may not be your first thinking, but that's what it ends up being.
It works out, yeah, absolutely. It works out being that way.
So if it's going to be permanent, let's make it attractive, which, you know, you have done to a certain extent. I mean, it's still done on plywood and not, you know, as, you know, a permanent sign you might do for a, for a monument sign or something, which I understand the cost of that is even more money. But that was the whole point is, okay, you guys need for lease signs. Let's figure out a way where you can have, have a for lease permanent sign as part of your, as part of your sign package of your, of your building.
Right.
So that we can get away from plywood that, you know, over time starts to look, you know, frayed. And I know the 3930 building, it was falling apart. And, and it just looked terrible. So.
That is driven to some degree by, by the cost.
Right.
But, but again, I, what I would suggest is that you, you have some ability to come back to people and say, look, your sign is looking old and dated and you need to replace it.
Can I just?
Derek, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Because I, I mean, I know we have two owners here. My understa, I mean, I kind of just step back in that. Here, we have, they regulate signs generally as temporary, limited duration, or permanent sign. And my understanding is that at the limited duration signage level, they've adopted a policy, I don't know how they determine, where it's up for a year. They consider limited duration to be up to a year. Has either one of you, before we enacted our signs, had your, you know, whatever kind of V-shaped or billboard something you have? Did either one of you ever contacted county that your year was up and that you should remove the limited duration sign?
No, I, I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
And so that's, that's what we suspected going into this process.
Okay, let me, can I finish? Let me finish my answer first. That's okay. I haven't. And in fact, when I put the signs up, I didn't request any approvals. I didn't know that there was any approvals that were required. And I did replace the one sign because it got old and ratty. But frankly, you know, I probably should have replaced that many years before. So I'll be the first to admit it. And, you know, no one ever complained, so I never replaced it. But here's the thing I'll say to you. I've been in my line of business leasing office buildings for 37 years. And right now, I own a couple of buildings, but most of my career was, you know, being hired by other people to lease their buildings. In 37 years, you know, when, when we would get hired to lease a building, I'd be the one that would put the order in for the sign. And, you know, we're going, in 37 years, anywhere, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Northern Virginia, Washington DC, Anaronda County, and not one area did I ever get a permit and not ever did I have anyone come to us. So it's the accepted norm in the world, not, not the world, but, you know, the, in the, certainly in this area, it's the accepted norm that people need these signs. They put them up and no one has ever had an issue with it. I'm not saying that they shouldn't and you don't have the right to, but that's the reason why no one has ever probably come to you or anyone else because it normally is never an issue.
Okay. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And look, I remember that you came before the council when we were considering this. A very heartfelt plea that, you know, filling the space was your business interest. And I personally. And, and I personally accepted that. Um, but I go back to what, the way the law is written. And, and it seems to be that the commercial buildings and, and, you know, other buildings have relied on the non-enforcement of the limited duration provisions for, for there. So, but, you know, that's not me. If, if we are going to look at the law, then the law provides for temporary signage, limited duration signage, or permanent, permitted signage, then I, my perspective is if you have a sign that is for all purposes permanent, it ought to be regulated under the permanent signage regulations, not limited duration, which is largely unregulated and as you tell me, it's not enforced either. Um, because that, that, it, it becomes something that people just leave up because they can't. Um, Neil Burka from, from, uh, Shopping Center, you know, I, I've seen him take down the sign when he's fully leased. But if there's a cost to take it down and put it back up, our experience has been that building managers don't do it. And, and, and I think you might have even been the one that told us, I will always have a space that is either for lease or that the lease is possibly expiring and I don't know if they're going to renew yet. And, and so what I heard from that was there is a permanent need for these signs. And so having heard that, my view is those signs belong in the permitted, permanent sign package, not the limited duration category. So that, that's how, that's what we were trying to do when we amended the statute or the code. And, and I, I'm certainly open to if we got it wrong, if it was too restrictive, revisiting it. But I, I still want to, I still want, at the end of the day, I want to believe that the regulations apply to limited duration signs, not permanent ones.
The only response I could have to that is if you go anywhere else in Montgomery County, there are signs everywhere you go and they're up permanently and there's never been an issue. So I don't know if that violates whether the rules are or not, but that's the norm. And if you take it into the permanent signage, then what you do is you, it, it indirectly hurts the building because, you know, in, in my building, I don't have any signage on the building right now. But most buildings, the other building, Farragut does have signage on it, and there's only a limited amount of permanent signage that you're allowed to have. So then that signage gets reduced by the, the size of the sign. So it is painful if you were to do it that way. Was required to get a permit for these signs and I was required to periodically update them to make sure that they were attractive and whatever, any of that, you know, I mean, I can certainly, well, I mean, I, I have to work with you no matter what, but I mean, that would not pain me to, to do that type of thing. And frankly, I, I, I want it to be, me personally, I want the signs, I want everything on our buildings to appear professional and attractive. So having an attractive sign, you know, fits your need and fits my need also.
Well, I think in your case, uh, Atlantic is actually your business. Is that correct?
It is, but that's, uh, I, I'm not really doing much in the way of brokerage anymore. So that's, it really, the signs now are for the, keeping the buildings leased.
Okay, no, that, that's fine. I'm just saying, you know, another problem is a lot of times because the property owner doesn't really care, they, you know, the Realtor will lease the building and then leave their sign up because they're getting advertisement from that sign, even though, you know, there's nothing to lease there.
Right, so I thought about that. And one way that you, if, if you write your rules in a way that you have some control over that and people are not allowed to have signs up if they're fully leased, one way that you can keep track of that is there's a website called LoopNet, L-O-O-P-N-E-T dot com. You can go into LoopNet and you can look up and see, it, it's not comprehensive. Um, and I don't know what it has and what it doesn't have in Kensington, but most, most buildings that are, you know, reasonably uh, decent buildings are going to want to be always listed in LoopNet because that's how the world outside of driving around or walking around or happening to be in Kensington, that's how someone would find us, is mainly through LoopNet. So if you go in there, you can see, for example, my building, and you can see every property, every space that I have available in that building. And if you were to go in there and see the building showed fully leased and somebody still has a sign up, then you'd be able to, to identify that, you know, they shouldn't have their sign up.
Okay. So, so what I'm hearing is you would like to see the square footage, uh, to go at least to sixteen? Is that correct for a one-face?
I, I would like to have sixteen for one-face, thirty-two for two-face, and you having control over whether or not someone can have a two-face sign.
Okay, and then, and, and they're, uh, having a, an option of, um, getting a variance on a location. Is that correct? Or a review?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. Right, obviously, we, we can't make those decisions this evening, but, um, I, I personally think those are reasonable. Um, Con- Connor or Nate or Bridget, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, just a couple of thoughts I've had. Um, I was looking at other municipalities around Montgomery County to see what they do. One that struck me, uh, kind of in line with what Mr. Blick was just talking about and the points you just outlined is what Poolsville does by having a sign board. You know, one thing we've also talked about is with, with other parts of our code is if we write the code in such a way that every sign that comes up comes to a variance, then maybe there's a problem with the code, right? If, if that's the process. But what I think Poolsville has done is created a sign board to try and have all these signs reviewed beforehand so that the owners of the property and the town can come to agreement. Because here's some of the things that came about. Talking to, you know, hearing from the business owners, a four-by-four, especially, uh, you know, I've had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Blick about this singularly, but it's not a sophisticated science of how they came about the typical signs for lease. You know, this, as he described at the beginning, eight-by-four feet, cut it in half, now you have two signs. They're each four-by-four. Um, so I see a lot of sensibility to the very simplistic way of, of coming up with a four-by-four sign. I do care about the placement of the sign, and it's partly because of what we've seen historically in the town in that, you know, the most advantageous place I get it is to be out near the street. But we tend to have our signs right out at the sidewalk. Um, and, and what I care about is, you know, I get it that that might be the, the optimal sign for a business owner to put it right there, but are they actually creating hazards with lines of sight at corners for both pedestrians, for bicycles, for cars? Um, and, you know, looking at, quite honestly, you know, thirty-nine-thirty at that, you know, that intersection of faucet and Knowles is already challenging.
Dietrich and Knowles.
Sorry, Dietrich and Knowles, uh, is already challenging. And a sign right there at the corner could exacerbate that, right? But a sign board could review that ahead of time with the building owner, bring up those concerns and work on the location of it. Likely with, you know, same with Mr. Blick, hey, putting this five feet from my building is either in the sidewalk or in my parking lot, neither of which is good, let's just work through it.
Words, however, I can tell you that there has been such a delay in just us dealing with, um, Matt. And Matt, you know, you can attest to this, we had been going back and forth with you for quite some time. And in the interim, we not only have two vacancies, uh, or multiple, more, more, more than two vacancies actually at thirty-nine, uh, thirty, Mr. Bannie's location, but we don't have a sign up still. And so we appreciate a board, honestly, we do. However, if there's going to be a lag in decision-making and just, you know, common sense approval, we're not asking for much. I do not, we don't want an electrical board. Like Eddie said, eventually he's going to get a monument sign. But in the interim, we need to be able to market the vacancy because he has vacancy loss, especially after COVID.
Well, there are, there are options out there that are inexpensive. Uh, the Riddle Building has a sign that is in compliance that, uh, it might be slightly more than five feet, but I don't think, uh, from the, uh, their front of the building is in the back on the, on the opposite side. So they have a real problem if you're going to do it from the front. Um.
So, I, I think the, something like a sign board is worthy. I think it would help to give business owners and their leasing partners a process that is clear and defined and, and can be worked out timely and effectively. I think some of the challenge that Ms. Murray may be alluding to is that the signs you're asking for don't comply with our code as it's, and that, that does cause delays.
And the time that it took to get to that place.
Understood. I think that's why a review before the sign goes in can help to alleviate that and, and make for a more efficient process.
If I could throw something in with that, if, if you had that and a sign was approved, then if and when a building became leased, the sign could be taken down. And then when a vacancy came about again, if you could streamline the process to get that same sign reinstalled and reapproved, that would be helpful.
And again, I, I think if we came about this, I think there's, you know, processes that could be put in place that I, 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 if we had something like this and a sign was approved in size, in layout, and in location, I think the, it would, it would seem logical that it would always be the approved spot. Now, if Mr. Blick comes along and says, hey, I want to move it down the road, well, okay, now you, we gotta bring it back through, right? And make sure that everything looks good. But if you're always putting the same sign back in the same place.
Yeah, one of the things we were trying to avoid was trying to follow what your sign, you're, oh, you're full, you're full, you're not full. Where's your sign? Uh, we didn't want to get into that. That's why our determination was just make it permanent.
So, yeah, I mean, the things I think we're trying to manage are, we've got a lot of signs that were way in excess of size, right out by the roadway that were causing, you know, safety and, and issues, were not being taken care of. Um, and so we're trying to address them. I, I'll be honest, you know, if we didn't get it right, uh, what I'm hearing is, you know, four-by-four is more common. And, and Mr. Blick, you and I talked about a V-shaped sign. There are ways to construct it where it doesn't double count. Um, so talk to Matt about that. It's all about the angle of the V. If it's thirty degrees or less, it only count, you only, it only counts as one side. So there, it, it's all, a lot of this, some of this is the, the county stuff that, you know, we're, we're relying on the county. But, um, you know, these are the reasons why I assign board and working with Matt, we can help to work with a partner on what are the outcomes you're looking to achieve and how do you design your board to maybe make it count only as one side versus two sides, um, et cetera. But I would rather deal with this proactively than reactively. And I think a sign board can help achieve that.
Okay. If I could throw out one more thing on what you just commented, the thirty-degree, I, I'd have to see how you would mount that. The, the, we use, um, what are they, four-by-four posts? You know, just pressure-treated posts? So I don't know how you'd get it to be thirty-degree, but may, maybe there's a post that you can buy that's at a thirty-degree angle.
Well, I, I, you know, the artist who did the rendering inside of the county's code made it look like it's so easy, but, but I see what you're saying.
Because the artist is, likes the, the complicated way.
If, if you could get a thirty-degree post, that works perfectly fine for me. I just, I'd have to fi- figure from a practical standpoint how we install this thing. Like I said, it's a very simplistic process, you know, it's not, not real complicated.
Uh, Nate and Nate or Bridget, do you have any comments?
Um, I get, no, nothing really. I think all the questions have been asked that I would have asked. Um, and I think Connor, your idea about a sign board is a good one. I always think being proactive is better than, than reactive. But the, I guess my, my only question is still trying to determine where, you know, when we're talking about, you know, there's, there's reason, is a reasonable ask for a four-by-four, um, some flexibility around um, whether it's V-shaped. Is this, in the context of it, still being considered a limited duration sign? Or are we talking now as part of a permanent sign?
I don't think we had changed anything regarding the permanent sign. Uh, I think it was more of the size and location that we could look at, but I, I mean, part of the wanting a permanent sign is that the sign would be maintained, better maintained, and it would be, uh, structurally, uh, more sound. So I, I don't want to go too far back to the beginning because the, uh, Ayesha's in a hurry and, and this could take some time, so.
I think what we, we, what, what we started with were these unregulated, limited-duration signs that were, you know, whatever the size sheet of plywood that the building owner wanted. And we created a system of limited to sixty days signage. And then at the last minute, we added a carve-out for a ten-square-foot sign within five feet of the building. And at, at least my sense from what we're talking about now is we're to make, we're talking about enlarging the carve-out to essentially swallow the base rule. We're talking about enlarging the carve-out to allow sixteen or thirty-two square feet, maybe not even subject to the distance from the building requirement for a essentially permanent basis. And, and I think that's the answer to Nate's question, which is where, where we're talking about this applying. In my view, at least my initial reaction is that undoes everything we tried to do about making this, making these signs truly limited. So, a- again, I, I, I want to figure out, we, we, unfortunately, we had to kind of work in this area as, as Mr. Blick points out, you know, because anywhere else in the county, you could just put these signs up and the county's not going to enforce the one-year limit. And, um, w- we sort of had to take this as a, a, a blank slate. And if there's another jurisdiction that has found, has regulated limited-duration leasing, brokerage, you know, barbecue season, signs effectively, I'm all for considering that approach. But what I don't want to do is just walk away from what I feel like the progress we did, made on cleaning up signs that were left up regardless of whether the building was fully leased or not. And so I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to let that exception of ten square feet within five feet of the building grow to the point where it undoes the, all of the effort today.
And I ask how you came up with that ten-square-feet and five-feet from the building?
So that's what's allowed under the county zoning regulations for residential property. Um, you can have a sign that's five feet behind the property line. Uh, we reverse that for the commercial, up to ten-square-feet. It can't be illuminated. Um, so that's kind of where the, where it started from.
Okay, so.
And again, I'm, I'm happy to, um, you know, revisit either of those. But going from ten up to thirty-two, and going from five feet up to, I don't know what, the, the property line seems unwarranted at this point.
And I, and I would argue that the ten-square-feet and five-feet was just unrealistic from the beginning. It just, it just doesn't, you're hearing from the owners, it doesn't work. And we're, we're the only owners that are on the phone right now, but Neil Burka would say the same thing. Uh, Scott would say the same thing. I mean, I don't know why they, they don't get more involved in this, but it just doesn't work for our business. So what you're doing is, is you're relegating us to where we really don't have a sign. And we need.
And, and I, I want to, I'm genuinely trying to be honest here. I, we don't want that. So I would rather, rather than looking at that carve-out of ten-square-feet, five-feet from the building, I would rather look at the limited-duration sign of up for sixty days, four times a year, and ask, does that provide the flexibility that you're looking for? If, if, in other words, if we said instead of sixty days, if we expanded that to, you know, uh, ninety days with two renewable ninety-day periods.
I have a piece of space in my building right now that's been vacant for two years. I think Eddie has got the same thing, that he said space that's been vacant for years. So that doesn't really, that doesn't help us. And the sixty, ninety days, it's like I said before, these signs that we're talking about at the minimum are about seven, eight hundred dollars per sign. I mean, I, maybe I'm, you know, not, maybe I'm more frugal than most, but I wouldn't want to spend eight or nine hundred dollars for a new sign that says the exact same thing every ninety days. It, it, it just doesn't seem to be practical to me.
And I, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, cleaning up, but it's not, it doesn't work in our world. We, we, we just cannot survive with the amount of vacancies that will, will accumulate and not be able to mar- market those vacancies. There, it's, there is no way we can survive.
I want to make sure I clarify be- because I feel like we, I don't want to, um, I don't want to enact code regulations that are, you know, in the middle of COVID. I, I feel, I feel like there are two different. I, I feel, I feel like there are two different worlds. There's COVID world that where everybody's trying to recover. Everybody's trying to fill space. And then there's the general world. I mean, I know it has ups and downs, but that's where I think our code provision should apply. If we need to take our code provisions and for the purposes of COVID, suspend their application or, that's what I would rather do. I don't want to legislate during COVID for rules that will apply in a post-COVID era either. So I understand that right now, commercial space is, it's a very difficult business to be in. It's got a lot of vacancies, but I want, I want a rule that lasts longer than the next couple of years.
And I appreciate that, but I would say to you, I mean, Kensington is a, is a relatively shallow market for office space. I mean, for the retail space is a finite supply of retail that's out there. If you want to be in a, you know, and it's got good demographics, if you want to be in retail, there's only so many places you can go to. So the retail will get fully leased and stay fully leased for an extended period of time. Office space is different. If you take a, you know, I can show you, you know, numbers. If you take a look at the historical vacancies in Kensington, there's always a substantial amount of vacancy. And it's not uncommon that space, you know, it's, it's not uncommon to take us a year to get space leased. The tenants that are in Kensington are here for the most part because they are part of the community or they specifically are looking, looking to serve the community. Other than that, tenants that are considering Bethesda, that are considering downtown Silver Spring, you know, some of the other areas, Rockville, whatever, they're not looking at Kensington. The people that come to Kensington are just mainly the people that the owners of the business and whatnot live here, and there's only so many of those people. So, I mean, I will tell you that I, with two buildings, I might see a new tenant prospect, and I have a good bit of vacancy right now. Right now, I might see one every month. Okay, during the normal, and I've owned Concord for 15 years, during the normal times, you know, if I was lucky, I might see, I might hear from someone once every 10 days, two weeks. That's not a lot of prospects, you know, you don't, when you hear someone, most of them you don't close. So you have to usually talk to a number of people before they close. So, you know, it, we, we have vacancy on a regular basis. It's a rare occasion. It's a very happy occasion, but it's a rare occasion when we're 100% leased.
Okay, um, I, I know it doesn't help particularly Eddie because he doesn't have a sign up at this time. Matt, could you share with Ayesha and Eddie the, the Riddle Building? I mean, that is in compliance. That's something they could put up tomorrow if they wanted to. They could do that.
Yeah, I can provide them a picture of what Brad Riddle posted.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was on his choice actually to put that up. I know it's not huge, but it is within the 10 foot, our 10 square foot, and it's something that you could put up. And we can be, you know, you could work with us and we could probably let you put it in that location while we're working through this. So, I appreciate you.
Matt, are you going to share your screen or are you going to send it to us via email?
I'll email it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So I think in the meantime, the council and we'll, we'll look at this. And it, it does, it does take time, but we will probably discuss it at a work session that we'll have to schedule in September.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and you guys listening to us.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Um, so, moving on. Okay, number four, we're going to go into the Spirit Club request. Matt?
Sure. Mayor Council, we received a request from the Spirit Club for them to place a shed on the north side of their property, which would encroach within the town's property. Not that, not the right of way, but the actual town property. We have an existing parking lot on North Kensington Parkway that the shed would be placed. Henry, Henry Scheller from Spirit Club is with us this evening. So Henry, was anything you'd like to add?
Yes. So just for anyone not familiar, Spirit Club is a nine-year-old company. We've been in Kensington our entire existence. We do fitness services that are inclusive and accessible for people with disabilities. So it's a really great mission. We have, we support about 300 to 400 individuals with disabilities every week. And because of COVID restrictions and limited capacity, we need, we have to spread out more in the gym. We need additional cleaning supplies, additional equipment. And so what we are asking for is a, a shed for directly outside our building, a 10 foot by six foot shed. And it would go on an open lot, like just a grassy lot that is adjacent to our building. And it would be very useful for us. We also want to present that we're very willing to be flexible and, you know, change the size of our shed or do anything, but we could just really use some extra space. So if it would be helpful, I could show a, a map of what it looks like. If it wouldn't be helpful, I can just answer any questions that you have.
The council did receive a picture, but Matt, it would be helpful if we went ahead and posted that for other people on the call so they could see for other residents. That would be, I know Matt's got it. He could probably.
Okay, great.
Share a screen or.
Can you just clarify for me? I see it just on Google Maps, the street view. I see a back door. I'm, I'm at that. Is that your back door?
Yes. We have a main door and then a side door.
Okay. And so this would be, I see a back door and I see a tree and then I see a round picnic bench, at least on Google Maps. Where, where would the shed be relative to those?
So it would be directly up against our building. So basically right, right next to the back door.
Okay. And Matt, does staff have a view on this request?
So we, we are not opposed to the placement. We did something very similar with Spring Bilingual about 18, 24 months ago. We would need a memorandum of understanding with the Spirit Club for any placement. The council did ask for some requirements on the shed with Spring Bilingual. So that might be something the council may want to take into consideration. We do not have a survey of that specific property on file, but according to the county GIS, it looks like the shed would almost completely encroach into our, our property.
Matt, wasn't that the security camera stuff because it was at the park?
Yeah, so slightly, we were, we've worked with Spring Bilingual on a couple of things. They helped us put a security camera at the playground and then they had a number of recreational equipment that they wanted to place in the park. And that's when the council provided approval for the shed, which is now installed. So.
And that area is adjacent to the playground equipment. I mean, it's actually closer than you would think in the picture. I mean, in this particular location for Spirit Club, there is nothing there. So it's just a vacant spot adjacent to a parking lot that the town does control. Our owns.
It would be set up like a, like a, like dollar release, like how, or would it be, you know, some sort of easement? Like how would that, I don't remember what we did for Spring Bilingual.
So we had an existing, we had an existing MOU with Spring Bilingual because they do use the park. So we just basically edited the existing language within the MOU. So we even need to do something similar with Spirit Club.
So if something happened where we were like, oh God, we got to get that out of there right now, we can do that? I mean, I can't imagine this situation, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a situation where we expanded that parking lot or the council decided to sell the land or something, we would write that into the MOU.
Okay.
I said a quick question. Henry, do you plan after, whenever COVID subsides to take it down or will it be permanent?
You know, if, if we could figure out when COVID was going to end, that would be wonderful. It seems like this big cyclical thing that we're going through right now. And, you know, right now we're going into a bad period. I'm sure it'll get good at some point, but who knows what it'll end. So I can't say for sure, but I, I, you know, just looking ahead, it seems like a lot of these safety, cleaning, hygiene, health procedures are going to be long-term, especially for the population that we work with, which are vulnerable people who often have additional health concerns other than their, their disability. So I, I don't want to commit to that. However, if you wanted to put a term in, in the MOU and you want, and first of all, we'd be incredibly grateful if you gave us this opportunity. But if you wanted to put a term in that said like, this can be a one-year lease and then you have to reapply, we're, we're fine with that as well. So whatever you request, we can, we'll accommodate.
No, I don't see a particular need for it. I just, I just wanted to know what, what the, what the ask was so that we knew.
Yeah, I, I think it's one of those things. If, if we get the, the shed, we'll, we'll probably use it to its fullest extent and then it will, we, we will want to keep it, but we can do anything.
Okay, thanks.
I think like at home, once you have an extra space to put stuff, you.
Yep.
Never want to lose it.
Find a way to fill it.
Yeah, so it's like having a garage and then not having a garage. Now, now what do I do with all that stuff? So, yeah, I, I think there would be enough clause in the, in the MOU that, you know, we could ask for it to be removed, you know, with certain amount of notice. So.
Hey, Henry, this is Connor. I mean, generally like we did for Spirit, for the Bonisaurus School, I mean, you know, I, I think this is a relatively light ask, once we see the language of the MOU. But something you said did kind of raise a, a flag for me. The idea of the storage is to help you guys store cleaning solutions?
Yes, they were the, the, the idea is we, in order to make our facility as safe as possible during this challenging time, where we, we now have less space and more things. And things being both cleaning supplies and just additional equipment so that everyone can do their own. So because of that, we're, we're looking for additional space.
So this, so then my question kind of goes more to Matt. If, depending on what these solutions are, these cleaning solutions that are going to be stored, I mean, are there county guidelines and EPA and all that for what he's storing outside in a space that's going to be on grass or over grass?
It's something we'll have to look into. I don't know for certain.
Okay, because especially if that's now on our property and it's anything that's regulated or whatnot.
Yeah, and Connor, we, we would be fine saying cleaning solutions stay inside where there's air conditioning and, you know, extra mats and pads and whatever can be outside. So.
Yeah, I think that's where I was going to is, is it's, my only concern was if, the moment you start putting things out, if they start leaking or if they're, you know, they're combustible, I don't, but, so yeah, if it's just, hey, we're going to put some extra mats and, and gym equipment and, you know, okay, great cones or whatever, you know. But the chemicals kind of has me a little, so, but otherwise, my only other comment would be that, besides the MOU or likewise what we did with the MOU with Spring Bilingual is that, you know, we asked that it be made of certain, more durable, longer term materials, not just like some plastic rubber made shed.
And I think the picture that was provided is that the shed that they're considering that?
I'll defer to Henry. I know Jared, I asked Jared to provide us with like an example shed of what they were looking at, and I think that's what he sent us.
Yep. So that's right. That, it's just an example shed. This is one that we found, but we can, if, if there is particular material or any regulations, we, we can look for another one.
Okay. Well, we would have the, the MOU to approve next month. And then assuming that the council is supportive, so we would have the MOU to review in September and then to approve. And then you could move forward, assuming that it's, you know.
Okay.
So, um, Bridget or Darren, any other questions? No?
No, I would support this.
Okay. So, council, do we have a hands regarding going ahead and moving forward with an MOU? Yes? Yes?
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't really want to have it be like a year term. I, I just, you know, I would rather have it be a license that is revocable within certain notice. I don't want to make, you know, an annual renewal.
I, I would agree with that. That's something we'd have to keep up with. And so I think it, it would be better just to, if there's a problem, we'll just bring it to Spirit Club's attention. And if they can't correct it, then, then we could, you know, within a 30 day notice, they have to remove the shed. Something on that line. I will rely on Sue Ellen to find the right verbiage for them. So. Okay, Henry, it looks like you got all positives. Just anybody from the audience have a question regarding this? Okay.
Just a question from me is just, so next steps, I understand an MOU would be put in place. Who, who writes that? And do you need anything from us to write that?
Our, our town attorney will write it.
Okay.
And then you, of course, will sign it. So you can, you can, you know, obviously, if you all have an attorney, you can look at it as well. It's pretty basic. And, but that would work through Matt through that.
Okay, got it. Great. Well, thanks everyone so much for having me at the meeting for, and for being open to this. We really appreciate it.
Did you want to push the fitness festival in October while you're here or?
Sure. So our partnering organization, the Spirit Club Foundation, they're an organization that raises money to make fitness accessible for people with disabilities. Because oftentimes people with disabilities have limited funds available and something like fitness, which is incredibly important to maintaining a healthy lifestyle, is oftentimes fitness is not within their budget. So Spirit Club Foundation funds programs like Spirit Club, Moco Movement, ZAM Dance and a number of other accessible fitness organizations. And for the past, I think, four years, we've been having this event called the Kensington Fit Festival, where we, we bring people together. I think sometimes we have up to 500 people and they come and it's a five-hour event on a Saturday or Sunday where there, it's full of just fun fitness activities. There's food, music, fun activities. So it's October 3rd this year. We, we planned it as late as possible to move it as far away from COVID as possible. And now it seems like we had just held it in July when it normally was, it would have been a lot better. But hopefully everything will still work out. So it's October 3rd. And if you, your families or anyone you'd like to, anyone you know and would like to share this with, it's a free, fun family activity. So we'll be sending out a lot more information. But Tracy, thanks so much for this opportunity, the Kensington Fit Fest, October 3rd. It'll be a great time.
Yeah, and we'll have a, Brittany's given us a, an ad for our journal that will be distributed in September. And I believe Congressman Raskin is going to be, be there.
I actually don't know, but if it was, that would be really exciting.
I, I'm pretty sure I read that in the, in what she sent out. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Anyway, well, I, I've attended the events and they are, they're wonderful and.
Thank you so much.
The food is like super good. You need to exercise after.
Yep.
So, all right. Well, thank you, Henry. Thank you for.
All right. Thanks everyone for having me. A pleasure. Bye.
Okay, we're going down to number five, the Main Street Maryland program. Councilmember Crimmens, councilmember Ingalls, myself and town manager Matt Hoffman, we attended a meeting with, I'm sorry, Christine. Yeah, what was her last name, Matt? Do you remember? Sorry.
I think it's McPherson, I thought.
Yes, yes, Christine McPherson, who's now working, now working, I'm sorry. Is now working with the state of Maryland on the Main Street program and delegate Jared Solomon had asked us to meet with her and get some information on it. Um, Connor Engel, or Connor or Nate, do you want to, uh, just make comments on the, on our, uh, meetings?
Sure. Um, I, it went well. I mean, she gave a terrific overview of the Main Street, uh, program and then helped walk us through the, the criteria. Um, the first being that, you know, a town of a population of a thousand or more where, you know, we clearly would meet that. Um, but I think right away what we learned was that one prerequisite for the Main Street program is that you also must be a sustainable community approved by the state of Maryland. Um, and, you know, going back through and looking, uh, through that, we are not yet sustainable or, you know, you know, approved as a sustainable community underneath the, uh, the Maryland, uh, program. So where, where we left it is, um, you know, we'd have to go back to the square one of, uh, being an approved sustainable community first, uh, in order to qualify for the Main Street program.
Actually, I actually looked into this and, um, if you look on Maryland ma- on the mapper, when you go online, Connor, it looks like we are considered a sustainable community, uh, under Montgomery County's designation. I'm not sure if that matters. I don't think we, we probably passed an ordinance to do it, but when you map it, it shows Kensington, you know, as a, as a sustainable community. I'm not sure if that, that function works or not, but, I mean, you, you probably have other things to add, but while we're on the topic, there are two sustainable community designations. I discovered that one is by the, by the state and the other is by the University of Maryland and MML have partnered for a certification for sustainable communities. Um, which I think irrespective of whether, you know, we think we should pursue the Main Street program. Um, I, I mean, I think it would be good for us to, to at least pursue sustainable designation one way or the other. The, the certification is a little bit more rigorous, it seems. Um, but, you know, I think it will probably align with whatever the county wants us to do or things we should do for the Climate Change Action Plan. There's a lot of seeming overlap between, between the two. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out that there are two and one is run by the state, the other is run by, um, by the University of Maryland and MML.
Okay, I know, uh, we had talked about maybe a year or so ago of, of trying to be a sustainable, uh, Maryland town. And, um, just other things, probably COVID got in the way of that. So, um, I think my big takeaway was a lot of the things that they brought up. Down note somewhere. Um, was you could, I mean, you almost need a, uh, you need to either hire someone or appoint a staff member as kind of like the, I guess it would be part-time, but the, the director of the Main Street program. So somebody's got to be in it, running it and pushing it. Um, I'm not sure we have that, um, ability right now. Um, and a lot of the things too, I found that they were, they're, it's really helpful if you've got a deteriorating Main Street or, uh, that you're trying to revitalize. Um, I know, um, some of the buildings could probably use, uh, some, you know, facade updates, but I'm not sure that's, uh, um, something that we, we are desperately needing. Uh, you know, we don't have empty storefronts. Uh, the businesses are, you know, survived a COVID pandemic. Um, we're already doing the promotional aspect through Explore Kensington. So, uh, and I also feel like because our business district is more than just Howard Avenue, that, you know, our other businesses on Metropolitan, you know, at the shopping center on the west side, uh, and, um, other areas on the north would feel like, why are they getting all the attention and we're not? So I would, uh, that would be, um, something I would want to think about before jumping into that.
Yeah, that was, that was my impression too, that whether the benefits outweighed the costs of pursuing it. And I'm not sure that it really added much, but, I mean, the, the only other thing I think she mentioned were the grants that we could access, right? There were two grant programs up to like $50,000 each for, for improvements. But, um, and then she did say that the, that it didn't have to be a person hired by the town. It could be a, you know, a nonprofit or another group running it as, as the, um, as the coordinator or the director of the program. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess the only other thing that, that came to, to mind was on, on your last point, Tracy, was if, if we wanted to do broader promotion be, uh, besides the, um, you know, Howard Avenue East, would we want to maybe reach out to the county and, and think about the West Howard Avenue area, which could probably use a little bit of, of improvement if, you know, if, if that's the purpose of the program?
Yeah, I, I, I hate to assume that, I mean, the West Side Howard, uh, which we promote through Explore Kensington as part of our business community, uh, through Explore Kensington, um, it's not walkable at all because of the lack of sidewalks, yet, you know, adding sidewalks, you're going to end up taking away a lot of parking. And they're, um, what would be helpful is to know what the state is going to do with the, the salt dome. I know they've talked about using it as a staging area, but that's a pretty big piece of property for staging. So, um, you know, maybe, uh, just getting the county to pay attention to that area to revitalize. Um, because there are some good businesses down there, because I, you know, that are just very difficult to reach by, um, through walking or even driving a little, because the parking is terrible down there, so. So I think at this point, um, I'm not sure whether we would be recommending following up with the, um, with the Main Street or whether we would want to just look at the Sustainable Maryland first. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, um, similarly, I mean, to the conversation already, I didn't see an overwhelming benefit to, um, the program versus what it would cost us to do it, the, you know, everything that was just talked about. I'm, I'm looking back through, Nate, your comment on, um, us being a sustainable community. And what I do see, I guess we are caught up in the mid-county region. Um, the kind of a huge catch-all that includes places like Wheaton, because we're part of the Wheaton Kensington Master Plan. That was included in that, that catch-all. Um, so it, it should see that, you know, we, in theory should be sustainable and thus would qualify under that. But to Tracy's point, a lot of it focused on either these grants, uh, focused on the revitalization of specifically the historic parts, since this is in relation to the National Historic Trust and, um, marketing. And I think we, we do marketing really, really well, um, heavily focused and, and in a very, uh, close step with our business owners. Um, and only a fraction of our business community would qualify for a lot of the grants. So I, I don't see as much of the benefit of it.
Yeah, and a lot of our businesses are actually taking part in, you know, are proactive in, in getting out their promotional, you know, through the social media and through events such as, you know, gigs. It's going to have those three concerts coming up this fall. And, uh, so, you know, the, the business community is very engaged too. Um, so I think Main Street is a great program, but I, I don't think we're in that position of, we're not, um, needing to revitalize that area. Uh, per se, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I think that's, that's how I feel too, but I'd be curious to hear about the, you know, the kind of tangent topic about the sustainable community. Should we explore the, the certification?
Yeah, I know, uh, we could probably get somebody from MML to, uh, if you want, to have them talk to us at a, at a meeting. Would that be helpful or?
Yeah, let's, we can put them next to the county person who's going to talk about the climate action plan and see, and see how they're similar. Because I look back and the action plan does not reference it, but if you look at the checklist for the certification, it's kind of like the LEED certification for energy, um, green design and rebuilding, but it's, it's a lot of the same actions that are required or asked for in the action plan, so.
Okay.
Well, and it's, most of what I've seen in the, the state's plan on these sustainable communities is less focused on the environmental sustainability, is more as the economic sustainability. So it's really focused on, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the website, so I don't think I've memorized this. Um, mastering the historic preservation, your housing and economic development, uh, especially bringing that under a single designation, working on infrastructure improvements, multimodal transportation, which I know we're working on, uh, and that's incorporated in a lot of other things we talked about like Thrive. Um, but then, um, uh, you know, uh, you know, the facade improvement and the grants is all about trying to create greater sustainability around, um, a healthy local economy. Um, not as much on the environmental. It is a bullet point. It's like the last bullet point in it. Uh, growth and development practices that protect the environment, conserve air, water, energy resources, and can encourage walkability and recreational opportunities. So the same word kind of being used in two different ways. Um, and so to the point of bringing in the county and, and talking about the, you know, sustainable environmental practices and, and the new, you know, county plan for, for sustainability, this kind of, this quote-unquote sustainable community is more around sustaining your economic vitality.
Okay. All right, uh, does anybody else, anybody have any questions regarding, uh, what we've just discussed? Okay. Seeing any hands, so we will, um, well, did you, uh, when were you hoping to have somebody from the county, Nate, sometime in September, October or?
Yeah, I think October was what we were planning. Um, I reached out to them, but I'll follow up.
Okay, okay.
So should we reach out to MML then too?
Yeah, um, I can reach out to them and to Scott Hancock and see what we can get from them, uh, to, uh.
Great. I think that'll align well with, uh, Walktober.
Walktober, yeah. Okay, great. Um, all right, so. Um, so we're on number six, Compost Crew update?
Unbelievably riveting update. Um, I conferred with, with Councilman and Senator Ingle, and this is really a leftover artifact from last month. Um, but a constant reminder to folks that, uh, if you would like to begin in-house composting, there are many services out there. We just happen to be, uh, working with Compost Crew right now and, and the household number is growing. Um, and third weekend, so are they coming up to the farmer's market this coming weekend? Is that what their schedule is? So they will be at the farmer's market Saturday, uh, if people want to learn more about in-home composting, if they want to learn more about this program. Uh, again, there are multiple programs out there, but what we're just trying to promote is an increase in, in-home composting, so. That's it. Nate, any other thoughts?
Nope. I think you summarized our non-agenda item well.
And, and just to clarify, the, uh, anything at the train station is on hold till we know where the, um, charging stations are going. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, you know, the charging stations have some real specific needs, uh, so we need to let those get placed first. And then composting has, really just needs space and, you know, something in a logical placement, so we'll let EV stations go first.
Okay, now we need some sort of structure to hold our big containers in.
Yes, the, uh, the North Atlantic Kensington Bear, uh, we want to prevent again it's getting into our compost.
Yes, that would be very good. And all the raccoons and the rats and everything else.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, let's, uh, anybody have any questions about Compost Crew in the audience? Not seeing any hands. Okay, good. Uh, so let's move on, uh, to council reports. Uh, Bridgette, do you have anything? You still having that baby? End of September? Yes?
Have we crowdsourced the name yet?
I mean, obviously Darren, well, your girl.
Hey, stop it.
Don't get his hopes up. Okay, uh, let's see, Nate, what do you got?
No, no, nothing else, I think, to, to add. Thank you.
All right, Connor or anything?
Oh, no, sorry, I do have one thing. I'm sorry, I did have one thing. I forgot. It happened when I was away on vacation. The crosswalk got painted, um, at Dietrich and Knowles. So, you know, SHA did that on Saturday, was it? Last Saturday?
It was a Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, so there's now a crosswalk there, so when you're walking along Knowles, you have a designated area to cross Dietrich on the south side of the street.
And of course, they did not coordinate with us and, uh, they did not call. Uh, and, uh, good news too is that, uh, SHA has finally returned and started taking out the median to extend the left turn onto, uh, southbound Connecticut to left turn onto Plyers Mill. So, um, they're extending that left turn lane, which shall, uh, help, uh, ease hopefully the backup from, uh, two, uh, lanes being, um, or at least the, I guess the far-left lane is also stuck into that, uh, turn. So hopefully extending will help. So, um, I just had to ask Matt, what's the story with the, um, the Porta John and the barrels sitting at Concord and Connecticut, our university, and, uh, they showed up the next day, so it was great. So, all right, uh, Darren, do you have anything?
Um, the only thing I, I, I guess I would mention new, since I, can I talk about Safeway even though, you know, we're still three to four months out. Um, the long battle to, against the shopping carts being, or just discarded around town, Safeway has indicated to us that they have put in an order for a perimeter system that will keep their carts from being taken off-site. Now, they say three to four months until it gets installed, but at least it's, um, something on the horizon. So nagging apparently works.
That is a victory, a true victory.
So Darren, is this, is this where I mentioned that at the corner of Plyers Mill and Metropolitan?
Get it yourself.
I just saw my first CVS shopping cart.
I saw a giant cart, um, somewhere else too, and it, it's just, it's, you know. And, and look, I, I, I want to give Safeway credit for doing something in response to our concern. But I also say that other jurisdictions like California, which I normally loathe to emulate, um, have created these shopping cart retrieval districts where each of the, any business with shopping carts pays into a system and they collect the carts from wherever and take them home. Um, you know, it, hopefully, if it's one or, it's one CVS cart or one giant cart, I wouldn't necessarily push that. But if it's more, then we might want to see if the county council is interested in, um, that sort of system.
Yeah, I mean, we're not the only jurisdiction with this problem. And, uh, that's, I mean, I've seen articles in Washington Post and has to be, you know, they, they're around. And actually, I sent an email and a picture to Matt over the weekend of the Dick's Sporting Good, uh, cart that was sitting in front of the Liberty Station. So, and they're not going to retrieve that, so I did ask that, you know, one of the crew just return it to Dick's Sporting Good or Urban Thrift, see if they wanted to sell it. I don't know, but it's, uh, it is, uh, it's frustrating and I.
The fact that they keep throwing it in the creek is what really
That's very frustrating.
Kind of puts the cherry on top of the whole situation.
Yeah, but, um, I know shopping carts started, the Safeway ones started to stack up, um, behind the Liberty Station. So, you know, Safeway's got to have been feeling, you know, where are all our carts? I mean, the little ones really aren't even available anymore and everybody loves the little ones, but, you know, they just keep disappearing, so.
Kind of get a granny cart.
I know.
I love my granny cart.
Yeah. Oh, boy. All right, Connor, did you have anything?
Um, just, uh, two, there, there's going to be a new business coming to town, actually one of John Blick's buildings. It's a acupuncturist, uh, which is actually going to be run by a Kensington resident, uh, over here off Plyers Mill Court. I think it's in the next couple of weeks, so keep an eye out for that. Um, and then the only other one would be Warner Circle, uh, but it, I think you've got a more recent update if you want to share that.
Uh, well, I sent it to you. You can update it, because I got
I didn't see it before the meeting.
You didn't see it before the meeting? I was surprised I didn't get a response from you.
Yeah.
It's really good news, so you got, you have anything else to add here?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Warner Circle, uh, Connor? All right, Warner Circle, Connor and I, along with Jason Gerson, have been meeting with the office, what is Rich's title?
Chief Administrative Officer, yeah, Chief Administrative Officer.
Chief Administrative Officer. As well as Greg Osnot, who is also with county, and last week, or two weeks ago, we added Parks into our discussion, including Mike Riley and legal counsel as well, and I guess we laid down the gauntlet, because you guys got to get this fixed. And so today I got an update from Greg, and it was very good news that they have worked out the hard stuff, and they've, and they just have a little technical issues, and he put in big, bold letters that will be completed this week. So this is indeed very good news. They're sending out public notices to the agencies and to other municipalities about the property that is going to be sold and to Carl Vogelmeier at Washington Landmark, and that they've asked that we send a supportive letter, you know, to the county council, because the county council will be the final hurdle, and I don't see this as being an issue, that the property will be sold, and they will bless that in and hopefully at the September or October meeting. And then we'll be able to move forward, so I feel confident that we'll be able to see some, this building renovated and repurposed and just brought back to its former glory in my lifetime, so. I'm really happy about that, so that's very good news. So we'll be, locally, I don't think we're getting an alcohol permit, but we might be popping the cork at the Opera in the Park in September, which would be great, so, that would be wonderful.
Yep, which is September 19th.
Yeah.
So that would be, I mean, terrific if you can accomplish that with a ribbon cutting of, we'll have two sides of the legal argument, you can just cut right down the middle.
Well, their problem and their disagreement had to be resolved because in order for this to go through, and I applaud them for finally getting it to their top of their to-do list, and they sat down and they hammered it out, and it seems like we're in a good place now, and but it will get completed by whenever the county council can schedule, so we will be sending a follow-up letter of support, which we've already, you know, we do support the the sale of the house, the Currie House, so I look forward to that. Does anybody have any questions on that, just in case? No? So I do want to remind everybody, Connor, were you done? I'm sorry.
I am done, thanks.
I do want to remind everybody that we do have a big journal coming out for all the September activities and other items, and the deadline for that, for anyone who have already pointed to that you are going to be providing something for, the journal is August 13th. We're also, that is the extended deadline for the Town Directory. So we'll be sending that out, I believe we'll send that out to the printer, and then we'll have it in everybody's hands sometime after Labor Day. So we've had a lot of turnover in the town, a lot of new people, so it's not too late, if you have a neighbor who's new, you can't provide us that information, but you can encourage them to send it to us, and that's available on our website. So I'll send something out on the list service, a reminder, but we'll be getting that out. Also, you know, we now have COVID restrictions indoors for, so, but we do have a lot of events coming out, coming up, mostly outside, but we do have the Labor Day Festival. We're not doing the parade, of course, but we are doing the festival, and then of course Paint the Town will be inside the drill hall, so you will need to wear a mask for that. The train show as well, mask. And then, as Connor mentioned, Opera in the Park, got the AK Race, I talked to John Seabreeze over the weekend, very excited about the AK Race coming back, they've changed the route. So I think they're staying out of, it looks from the map I saw, like they're staying out of Rock Creek Hills. Maybe the hills were getting too much, but mostly Long Beach and Kensington Parkway. Seems like their route has changed a bit. We are gonna, Sean Geiser is going to do pumpkin rock and roll at the Warner Mansion, which is exciting to do that there. He's also, Giggs is going to have three outdoor concerts on Howard Avenue or in his little courtyard in the back. Concert series, of course, will run through the end of September for the Kensington Historical Society, those have been a big success. So Jack, you're here, I'm going to let you be recommend, recognized as a Kensington Historical Society member. Thank you for getting that going again. And of course, food trucks are next week, next Thursday, right? Thursdays, the 19th, five to eight? This Thursday, right? I don't want to give out the wrong date, yes, Thursday. And the Kensington, K-Town Ladies is working on a Winter Wonderland Festival in December. So that's, that'll be a new event this year. And we should be approving the mural on the backside of the warehouse on Metropolitan that faces Howard. Talked to Nicole Rogé, and we should be approving that in the September meeting. So I've not seen her drawings yet, but we will do that in a public meeting in September. If you haven't seen her mural in Wheaton, I encourage you to go, it's beautiful. It just pops off that wall on the new park and planning building, it's really, it's lovely. So it's really, she's a really great artist. And the last item I want to bring up, many of you know Julie Mueller, she is retiring from Parks, so sad to see her go. She had hoped to be around long enough for the Warner Circle, but for the renovation of the mansion and the, but I'm sure she'll come back and visit to see that, see that done, but she is retiring at the end of, I think, the end of September. So anyway. So that's all I've got, so I think Matt or Susan, do you have anything? I see Susan, you forwarded the minutes, so we'll look at those and approve them in September, so thank you. Matt, you or Susan have anything else?
The only thing I'll add is, we'll have the language for the survey out within the next couple of weeks that we'll submit to the community in September. And then kind of moving forward, just over August and September, we'll start cleaning some things up, working on ordinances that we've been talking about the last few months, mostly regards building setbacks and everything and driveways, so. Hopefully we'll have an ordinance for the council, probably in October.
Do you want to hash any of that out at a work session before, or?
That'd be fine, I mean, we'll probably need to do a work session for signs, so.
I was thinking we could.
If the council's up for a long work session with dinner again, maybe we can get through a bunch of things, so.
Okay, I see Bridgette saying, after the baby, after the baby, so. Maternity leave. Okay, yeah, I think we'll need to, we'll need to do that. I think it'd be better to do that in person than trying to hash that out of the town meeting, so. Thank you. Okay, let's see, keep moving my agenda here. All right, so public appearances, opportunity to bring up things that are not on tonight's agenda, and I see Jack, you've got your hand up. Jack, where are you?
Thank you. Yeah, something not on the agenda, I have two astronomical announcements this month. The perceived meteor shower will peak will peak the night of Thursday, August 12th into Friday morning, August 13th. They are predicting 60 meteors per hour, this is usually the best meteor shower of the year. Now, please remember that this, this happens several days on each side, this is just the night they expected to peak. It's not like an eclipse, it just happens once. The waxing crescent moon will set well before midnight, making ideal viewing conditions throughout the rest of the night. Best viewing is between midnight and dawn. And on Sunday, the 22nd, will be the full moon.
Okay, good, thank you, Jack.
Jack, I have a quick question, because every time you do this, I always like, sometimes I do go outside and I can never see here, but where in Kensington do you recommend people go to look?
I don't know anymore. I used to go to the top of the, to the top of the hill in the Rock Creek Hills Park before they built the new junior high school. But for the meteor shower, I'm just going to sit, I'm just going to sit on my back body. It's it's useful to sit, you know, to sit for a while, because it takes, you know, it takes 15 minutes for your eyes to fully adapt to the dark.
You know, you might try behind the HSC in the, it's pretty dark back there.
In the parking lot of the grass there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they have some lights next to the building, but they, it's pretty dark in the, on the field.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Does anyone else have something that's not on the agenda that they want to bring up tonight? Not seeing any hands, and okay. So we'll move on, we have ordinances, resolutions and regulations, Matt, I think that's just on there.
Nothing on the agenda this evening.
Okay, so, wow, the last thing's adjournment. It's not even nine o'clock, so we just need to make a motion to adjourn. Unless somebody else has anything, council, that you forgot and want to bring up?
This is off-topic to everything, but I've been promised bento boxes by that sign in the shopping center over by where the dry cleaner used to be.
Next to Five Guys.
Yeah, where is my bento? The sign has been up forever.
Which?
This is the Japanese place going in by the, where Kicks used to be, I saw them doing build-out last week. Yeah, but Matt, you know something more of it?
It's Karate Kid, Kicks, it still has that sign up, but yeah, it's changing to the Hibachi place.
Changing to the Hibachi, and we have a permit on file for them.
I feel like I've been teased. Pregnant lady wants her bento.
And for all the dog owners or pet owners, we are getting a new pet store as well at Knoll's Station, so I believe it, his name is Nathan, I didn't get his last name, but he's opening, I think, August 30th or 21st is his grand opening, so. For all the pet owners, we are getting a new pet store, so I think that'd be a good fit in that, but much better than a Verizon store, quite honestly, so.
Is replacing the Verizon store?
It's replacing the Verizon store that left in the middle of the night.
No way.
He's like a contractor of Verizon, he's not real Verizon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. Anyway, okay, well, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, hi. All right, thank you all, have a good evening.
Have a great week.